Okay, we call a meeting tour. Uh, we, uh, we, I'm just pleading for me. A diligence to apply the United States of America into the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty of the Crown. We're ready to discuss. Uh, right here, a motion to adopt the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to, after the approval of minutes, back to the village briefly on what we should start doing about the merger. Okay, add that in under approval of minutes on our agenda? Or your motion to?
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, okay.
The agenda.
Agenda.
Any second, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of minutes of twelve, two twelve twenty-four, we've all read them. And, uh, well, your motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. February 20th.
Your second?
Okay.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of minutes is carried. Now, let's, uh, the reason why I wanted to get you guys here with us is the merger. And, um, instead of just having a select board say, we're gonna go hire a consultant, it's gonna be a town and village thing, so that's, that's what, that's what, uh, that's why I really kinda wanted to get everybody here, as many as we could. Do you guys feel we need, the first step is to get a consultant?
That's definitely. Now, didn't we get a grant for that?
Yes, we did.
No, we, we, we didn't get a grant, and Sarah actually has a little, kind of a bullet point that she's gonna put on the screen, so, um, what the grant is, uh, to entail.
Can you see that all right?
Yeah.
Make it a little bit better for you two.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the municipal planning grant that the town received for this project has five tasks. The, uh, the contract for the grant has been executed, so these tasks are what were approved for the grant. Um, the first task being a kickoff meeting with a local steering committee, um, which would be, which would include the consultant. Um, the meeting would have the steering committee review the work plan, timeline, and the project goals. Um, and it's, the way the grant was written was, was that the steering committee would be developed by the select board and village trustees prior to the project kickoff meeting. Uh, task number two were committee meetings, again with the consultant leading the meetings for, with the steering committee and likely Paul and I. Um, so there are six meetings involved in the, uh, project to identify requirements for municipal merger, assess available information to prepare financial impact summaries, discuss exists, existing municipal staff roles and functions, assess scenarios for revised services under merger. So that's the bulk of the work. Um, task three is the draft and final report, which would be prepared by the consultant and the steering committee and, uh, local project management. So the draft and final report will have the draft and final merger feasibility, feasibility report to include summary of municipal budgets, administration, department operations, and assets of the town and village, with a cost benefits analysis in support of future capital planning projects. Um, task five, I'm sorry, task four are community presentations, again with the consultant. Um, it's anticipated that the consultant will present the draft and final report in two public meetings jointly held by the town and village of Holy. Um, so task five is sort of where we are at right now. The way the grant was written was that, that there would be local project management, and so that would be Paul as the town and village manager, and myself assisting to, the both boards to develop the steering committee and to, um, manage the project and support the consultant. So assisting this consultant to identify key stakeholders and local leaders for planning meetings and public outreach, collect data and information in support of committee work and/or drafting a feasibility report, attend community meetings and presentations. So the way the grant was written, um, the steering committee would have been developed prior to the consultant, um, coming to the project. I think that's the conversation that we're at for next step.
Well, that would be first step one is kinda getting a, a steering committee and then getting a consultant.
That is the way it was written.
The way the grant is.
We haven't issued an RFP for the consultant yet, so the work plan could be modified if the boards decide they wanna go a different route, but this is the work that's contained within the grant.
So it can be mod- modified, we can get the consultant if the village agrees, we can get the consultant first, and then the consultant can kinda guide us on how many and what type of steering committee we should have.
You, you could do it that way. Um, it would be an additional task, um, that the consultant would have in this particular work, yeah.
Okay.
We have discussed the village, we just figured it'd be the two boards, it would be a steering committee, but it's only five on ours still, it's.
Yeah, it's only five on ours, yeah.
I think there was some thought, uh, Joe, that I heard some people in the committee saying, shouldn't you have someone in, that's not on the boards on the, one of these or, on these committees? I, I, seriously, I don't know.
Well, don't we have, I mean, from what I understand, we have to have the steering committee first, then we meet with a consultant, then we have the other committees, right? Is that?
The steering committee first, and then the consultant would work with that steering committee through the play from the project.
If we have outside people, they will be part of the steering committee.
We've got outside people.
Well, see, if, if, we had, when you talked about you wanted someone that was not on the board to be on the steering committee, they would be on the steering committee throughout the process.
Yeah, but I think at the last meeting, we also talked about the size of the steering committee and, you know, the expertise that is on your steering committee. I mean, there's a lot of financial, uh, analysis contained in this, so, um, you know, it makes sense to me that there may be employees of the municipalities on the steering committee as well. I could, um, I could connect with some of the other municipalities that have been studying merger, uh, that we've been working with, to see.
Call for Free Palestine, the video.
All right, um, so that's one way that we could approach it without having a consultant do the work.
Can we find out, you guys, is everybody okay with Sarah? Do you wanna reach out and see what they did for their steering committees, if it was like the boards, uh, and how big they were?
How big it was?
Yeah.
And what the makeup was?
Yeah. Those were my, you're sounding like you're saying too, Sarah, is that if we go flip it and have people to consult first, that's?
Yeah.
A little more.
A little more money, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to do our steering committee first, because that's the way it's been written in the grant?
Yeah, I mean, that's the way, exactly, that's the way it was written in the grant. I think we could do a little legwork locally and just reach out to some other folks who have gone through this and see, you know, what worked and what didn't work, and, uh, if they had any recommendations, um, and then make a plan for maybe soliciting letters of interest or appointing a steering committee, um, locally.
I mean, how many, locally, how many towns, towns have gone through this? I know, that's, I'm throwing it out.
Yeah, um, so I've got four different, uh, communities, Johnson, uh, the village and, uh, town Johnson and Edisburg, there's one more that I can't think of right now.
London, that's what I was gonna say, Linden and London, no?
Yeah. So I have been in touch with some of the town managers in those locations, um, and village managers to ask them a bit about their process and what happened, um, and they've been really, really helpful.
Was Randolph, did Randolph go through that? It did something, it might not have been. Yeah, let's get in touch, if, if everybody's okay with it, let's, let's get in touch and see a direction on, or how, how big the steering committee should be. Should it be the two boards, should it be, you know, some people from, from the town and village?
If you put out the RFP at the same time as we're doing that, too, it sounds like.
Yes.
Um, the grant does, um, there's a two-year, um, uh, schedule for this grant, so not that we wanna take two years to study this, but, um, it's not as though we have to, you know, move through this at the speed of lightning. We've got some time to do this correctly, so, um, yeah, I'd be happy to do a little research and come back to the board.
To the boards.
Recommendations.
Okay.
Or I can give them to Paul to share with both municipalities, however you want.
Yeah, that'd probably be, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, that's good.
Maybe you can share them with us, and then, you know, either we can get back together and make a decision together, or we can go.
I'd suggest together would be.
I, I kinda feel that way, too.
Think long-term.
It shows unity in this. Okay, let's do that, see if we can get it done, maybe by, and get back together, hopefully by the end of March, and, uh, get, at least get it started, and then we can find a consultant, and then start a direction.
And one thing, as we're looking at these other town, getting, uh, to see if they're made up the same as Holy, it's still they have one, two.
Okay.
I assume most of them don't have two.
Okay, yeah.
Sarah, do you have a consultant in mind, or?
Um, no.
Publicly?
No, um, there's one consultant that I saw that did the merger study for, um, I think it was, I can't remember which one it was, it might have been Johnson right now. So I do have a small list of sort of pre-qualified folks. Um, for the application, we did have to, there's another consultant locally that provided us, um, some, uh, review of the application and, and their hourly rate, so that helped us get this, uh, grant application, so we've got two.
How much was the grant for?
Um, the total, do you remember the name of it?
It was ten, ten thousand?
I think it was ten thousand plus a, a, approximately three thousand dollar match, um, for a total project that was in the vicinity of thirteen thousand dollars.
Thirteen?
Yeah.
All right, at least we got the direction going, that's the first step, and we can, we can go from there, just, I really didn't, I felt uncomfortable making a decision without the village with us, you know, I mean, because we're gonna, we're in this together, really.
And to, to hire a consultant.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a time, we're dying.
Yeah. But, um, all right, good, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. So we'll get that out, and we can get it to each of us, and then when we get all our facts and figures, we'll, hopefully the end of March, our last one in March, which would be, either we can go Thursday night at your place, or you can come to our place on a Monday. Be it the twenty-fifth of March or the twentieth of, that might be too soon, the twentieth of March. That's your next meeting. Let's go, can we kind of tentatively put it for the twenty-fifth of March to get back together and find out where we stand on this, and, and then start, is that enough time?
Yeah, I think that's enough time.
Okay.
And then maybe we can swap it back and forth.
And then, yeah, Thursday night, come to your place, and Monday night, come to our place, you know?
Who's gonna do the food?
No, we don't bring food, but.
Oh, yeah. With the guests.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much, you can stay if you want, or?
No.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, on to the road report.
Uh, between the silly little snow towers that we've had lately, we've just been, uh, getting in early spring cleanup and preparing for summer construction. Um, kind of working on changing some tactics that have been bulk ordering some things, like, uh, first big one that I've worked on is diesel exhaust fluid, it's something that we use a lot of, because the majority of our fleet takes diesel exhaust fluid, uh, it's pretty pricey, pricey, we buy it a lot, uh, just trying to save some money where we can. So I've been kinda trying to do that, along with, um, really looking into some different aggregates for, for road, for winter sand, and possibly even for surface gravel, because if you drive on the back roads, you can see the, the amount of slop there is to them, and you can see a pretty substantial difference from where we put down the crushed limestone last year versus where it's just been gravel for years, you know, it's much stiffer, you don't get the crazy, uh, ruts and everything, but that limestone by itself, I, I think it's just a little too stony, you know, uh, bicycles are gonna have problems, motorcycles are gonna have problems.
Are you that the material that we had, several flat tire complaints?
Yeah, yeah, if, if we go, if you go with that without putting some sort of fines, adding fines into it, or coating it with a thin surface layer of road gravel, it, it's a little, it can be kinda heavy on the stone, really, it's just, you know, it comes from another place that, um, we really have no control how they mix it, how they, how they approach it, how many fines are really in it, and how rocky it is.
It was pretty rocky, I don't really know, the spike is.
Yeah, yeah. If you put it down when the ground's soft and you have a lot of gravel, it, it pounds in pretty well, and it, and it mixes in, and it pushes down in through.
It's gotta be crushed up a little finer?
I could see if they do crush it up a little finer, um, I think that's a three-quarter minus, if I'm not mistaken, or, the three-quarter with some fines, actually, is what it is, it's not really a three-quarter minus, if it was three-quarter minus, it would, it would bind together even better, but it's crazy stuff, and it, it doesn't have the clay content or the silt content that our, our road gravel has. I'm, I'm just trying to see what other options, there's no guarantees yet, but I'm trying to see what other options where we can get the same quantities that we've been getting in the previous years with, um, you know, a, a matching price to gravel.
Right.
See what the options are there, so, uh, that's a, that's in the works anyways. Um, I mean, you come down into our yard, you, you step out of your vehicle, and you walk around, and you're, suddenly your boot has an extra five pounds each one, so that's kinda, this is sad, really, that's, that's sad. Then you drive down the road in summertime after a hard, significant rain event, and you feel like the road's icy or, or something, you're just kinda, you know, slopping around, so trying to mitigate that a little bit, um, it might take a little time to, to really see what's out there for different quarries and different, different stones, you go into different areas and you get all sorts of different kinds of stone.
Right.
Some of it lasts, some of it breaks down.
See, that last limestone you used will eventually make a good road.
Yeah.
Very stable, low grade.
We just add more fines into that, which is where we went, and we put gravel over top of it to, to kind of help blend it, bind it in.
Right.
I'm just wondering, taking a crusher from three-quarter.
I can certainly see, I never, I would never got a product list from that company, from that, um, from them, so I, I don't know what their other availabilities are, I just know that they have that, which they call crusher run, and then they have fines, which I even had, I had a couple loads of pure fines all last year, too, just to, to mix it in and, and bring the, the rock content, you know, bring it to a, a fifty-fifty or happy medium, so it wasn't just pure stone. I mean, we can't plow pure stone, we can't have just a pure stone road, because we'll plow it all in the ditch, or over the bank, or near your yard, or, or whatever, it does have to be something that, that binds up pretty tightly, and, um, so anyways, that, that's in the works, it's kind of a, you know, medium-range time, timeframe thing to figure that out. Uh, I'm also working on contacting a couple companies that do crack sealing, uh, Thrall Road was paved two years ago, if you drive over that and take a look at it, there is a significant amount of cracks in that road, and that is an absolute shame to let a hundred thousand dollars of asphalt just go to.
Crack.
Crack.
Couple places.
I was thinking another word.
I know. There's a lot of water in that road.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's the thing, so, you know, uh, I, I don't believe, we haven't done it before, I know it was looked into by a previous foreman before, and, and he never got phone calls back, uh, so that's. Yeah, yeah, so, you know, when you wanna spend money, you shouldn't have to chase somebody to spend it on, you know, it, within reason, I think two phone calls, three phone calls with a, a voicemail, and being sure that they got your callback number is, that's sufficient, if, if they can't respect that and give you a callback, then you probably don't want a company like that working for you anyways.
So what were they looking to do, drainage issues, or?
So I, I think a lot of it is, I, I think the road just doesn't have a good base, I don't, I can't tell you right now what the road does have for a good base, but if you went over Thrall Road before it got paved this last time, and we would spend a couple of days straight just, just cold patching that thing, and it's, it, it breaks away in sections, which leads me to believe that there's a lot of clay underneath it.
Moving.
Right, right, um, and maybe it also doesn't have enough cross drainage, you know, if you're, if you're looking at the east side of Thrall Road, um, it's basically uphill, most of it's all uphill, so all that water comes down, and if you don't have enough cross drainage frequently enough to get that over, it's seeping underneath the road, I'm, I got two road cones out there right now where the, where the ditch is filled and flooded down through, and it's actually eroding the, it's, it's, it's beginning to undermine the edge of the asphalt, and asphalt has broke off the edge of the road.
It's like a big chunk, I mean, it's gone, it looks like a big chunk here, but it's not.
We gotta catch that.
Yeah.
We have to catch that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, two, you know, it was paved two years ago, that was a hundred, what, thousand dollars?
Hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's, that's a big ouch, you know, and it's negligence to not do something with it, so, and for anybody that doesn't know to crack sealing, uh, you know, not only is it just to save that road or help, but I think it's like, I think they say like eight years that can add, an expected eight years to life, the, the asphalt road, um, but you get moisture in these cracks, so if we don't do this, this is what happens, if we don't try to do this, uh, next winter comes, you get the moisture down in there, it doesn't drain out, because it's a clay base, the clay can only hold so much water before it, you know, that, yeah, um, so your cracks, it's full of water, it freezes overnight, water expands as it freezes, pushing your crack bigger and bigger and separating the road faster, so anyways, that, that's kinda where my feelings are with that.
And the drainage on that road, you're looking at that?
I am, yeah.
Drainage.
Yeah, I am, um, it, it'd be tough to add cross drainage at this point, because it is fresh asphalt, and I'd hate to go cut ten sections out, put new culverts in, and then have a road that goes this for a hundred feet and that.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
That is something I just.
I think before the next time it's paved, we, we should reevaluate how frequent cross culverts are, and if they're over two hundred feet apart, we, we need to get them as close or reasonably close to two hundred feet, in, in a properly sized culvert to get the amount of water out. Uh, anyways, that's my thoughts on that. Uh, I'm working, I've got two different companies, there's not a lot of options, but I got two different companies, one of them, within the next week, I should hear a callback next week, and then we can set up a date to do a, a site visit, and then they'll, they'll create an estimate from there.
For cracking.
Yeah, and then the other company is the one that does a lot for B chains and stuff like that, and basically Nikon is the name of that company, the other one that I've already got ahold of is GW paving from Rutland.
Yeah, he, he's also over, like, Kingsbury.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, but if you look it up, it says they're out of Rutland.
Yeah, they have a branch in Rutland, a branch over New York.
Yeah, so I'm gonna reach out to Nikon as well, other than that, I couldn't find anything, um, I almost thought that Wilk did some crack sealing, or maybe it's seal coating that they do on, either, either way, I'll try to get two, two to three comparables on that and kinda see if, you know, if they're close in prices and, and whatnot.
There's no warranty or anything on that when they did that, like, two years ago?
No, no, all duct based.
They didn't, they didn't do the base material, the subbase, so.
Is that because we didn't wanna pay for the base material, or is it just the way they did it?
We have to rip it up and redo the road.
I know, that's the thing, why is it, why was it done that, why was that just because that's the way?
It's very expensive.
No, full depth reclamation, I mean, you're, it's all at the course of a one-mile road, you're looking at like a hundred and five thousand pavement, inch and a half asphalt, if you do a full depth reclamation, which still may not be an absolute godsend, um, you can double, easily double that.
It sounds like you have to put a lot of money into it now.
To fix that road, no, no, this is not.
No, crack, crack ceiling shouldn't be that bad, I mean, yeah, we're probably looking at a few thousand, but.
To fix that road, it's, it's gotta be dug out at least eight feet deep, stone down into drains and stuff.
Put bigger ditches, like, you go down a road on the sides where the water's coming up right now, because that's not, those ditches aren't very big.
Um.
There's nothing in it, but they're not that big.
On the east side, it's pretty deep, it's right down to the ledge, it's right down to solid ledge, and in one of those places where, I believe it's the first cone that we put out, uh, we actually can't go any deeper there without renting a hammer, because it, it is ledge, but the shape of the ledge is also causing the water to go right toward the road and undermine the road.
So I mean, I saw.
So.
Would it be beneficial to rent a hammer and get that?
My thought is try a, try a very thin layer of six-inch stone, um, to, to slow, decrease the flow, which we typically do on hills of a higher percentage grade, um, it'll still take the same volume of water, but it'll, it'll slow the travel of the water down, and that'll slow down the erosion effect as well, so my thought is to put in a, a thin layer of six-inch or, or maybe, yeah, I'll have to go look at it again one more time before we do it for sure, possibly even like a twelve-inch stone, um, so long as that leaves, uh, a reasonable overflow for excessive rainfall, because I, I'd love to fill it, but you're gonna lose half of the, the depth of the capability.
More problems.
Yeah, sure, yeah, then we'll.
Remember when the dump road got rebuilt? That's what you have to do, they went down eight feet.
Yeah.
That's a little.
It's just silly, it's like two years old, and we're talking.
Well, I think this one, even in this case, if, even if you dug this down to the depth of the ditch, you're talking about, there's, there's, there's solid ledge there at the depth of the, the base of the ditch, so if you dug, dug to the current ditch depth off the east side of the road and rebuilt from that, but you're.
Well, that's what the water on my old road, that's incredible amount of money, which leads me to the next thing, um, it's not catastrophic, but Upper Road, Upper Road is
in very, very poor shape for anybody that doesn't go over regularly, that's got a lot of alligator back in the roads, cracking, separating, and on the, the ski banks.
Alligator what?
Alligator back.
What was that?
Like a bunch of crabs, like, you know, it's got a bunch of lines to it, and, yeah, um, Upper Road, I wanna pave it, but I, I, that, that, that's just, until we do some bank stabilization, or actually dig parts of that road out and, and stabilize that bank, I, I think I'm throwing money away.
How long is that?
And I don't wanna pave it until it's at least, you know, at least until we can fix the, the worst of the areas, because I.
Is that a project you're gonna work on this summer?
Paving that?
No, no.
No.
Uh, getting, uh, thick, uh, doing the, uh, work to the road base itself.
For Upper Road?
For Upper Road.
Nope. Um, I'd love to, but, oh, if I go and measure that out, that's, that's a lot, it's an extreme amount, and we, I can't just back trucks up to the edge of that and dump it and hope that the, the stone's gonna roll way, way down, we gotta actually set that in on the bank side and try to actually pack it back to the road, that's gonna require a rather good-sized excavator to do that. Uh, I did do some talking with QSI last year when we were getting some material out of them, though, and they'd be happy to contribute, uh, I believe also, um, Steve Tarrant would contribute material, and then there's another one that's been quarrying off of Dupontis Quarry Road, can't remember that, that, that company's name, but, uh, I guess they're gonna have some waste rock, is what I'm told from one of the other guys on the crew, that they'd be happy to, to get rid of, too, so if we can get like QSI or, or Tarrant to run some loads with their giant pit trucks out and get an excavator, whether it's rent it or get a company to come in and stabilize some of that bank, and I think there's sections where we're gonna have to, where we're gonna actually have to dig out a portion of the road to redo, I mean, just, just drive over it and, and look, and it, all of a sudden you got like a fifty-foot section that just drops down, and then it comes back up again.
Well, it's like.
My, it's a serious concern that a school bus is gonna drive up that road, which they have a route on that road, and it's gonna be just. And it's gonna be just slick enough or whatever. They're gonna hit that dip, that low spot, and the bus can go down over that bank. That just.
So what is stopping us from working on that?
And I am gonna start.
It's the size of the excavator?
The size of the project in total.
Size of the project, okay.
Uh, I, I think we're, you know, even if we get, um. Donating, donated material, we're looking at a lot of labor time.
A lot of hours.
With our current size of equipment.
And after that, you still have to repaint it.
Yeah. Yeah. But there's, there's, it's not the entire length of the road. The entire length of the road does have sections. Um, and there's a couple of sections that are rather sizable.
Can we do it in smaller steps?
Probably. We're still gonna need big equipment for the places that we're working on though. Uh, oh, a long stick excavator potentially or.
What do you got, kind of sixty footer?
Uh, I don't think quite that, but. Pretty, pretty good size. Yeah, may, maybe. Um, I, I'll, I'll talk to Tarrant more about it and, and, um, the gentleman that runs QSI. And, and, you know, we'll see about getting them to run their, their UX, their big articulating dump trucks. And even if we can make piles and then machine can just pick them up one rock at a time and slam them into the bank side. And start stacking right from the bottom. I'm also gonna have to figure if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna decrease the angle of these bank sides. Uh, have to talk to some of the landowners too, cause we'd actually be kicking out the base, the bottom. The base at the very bottom too, so.
It'll be, yeah, coming in, right.
So it should be kind of an, it, it's a pretty extensive project, but I think just throwing asphalt on it, shim coating it right now. Would be a, a, a true waste of.
Yeah, we, we start doing things, we gotta start loo- looking at it the correct way.
Yeah.
If we have to do it in smaller steps to get there, then, then we'll get it.
Yeah, but if you, if you don't know about the dips, what I'm talking about, just take a drive up through there. I mean, you'll see them. It's pretty, it's pretty getting flat for a while and then all of a sudden you'll just like the whole right side of your vehicle just dip right down. You're like, whoa, whoa. So that's my, that's my other, my other, um. Yeah, not, not really a short term, medium, mer- medium, uh, term plan to get that, get something going like that. Um, you know, and also you got the quarry trucks to go over too. There are a lot of weight. They used to say that the bank. I mean, I, I haven't been here long enough to know how long it's taken to actually push that much of the road down. But I do intend on shooting it with a transit to see what difference it is right now. And then revisiting it next year if we don't get some of these places done. Um, and see if we're losing it yearly or, or how we're, how we're doing early.
Yeah, form some data.
Yeah, yeah, basically. Um. Uh, we're, we're currently working on a structures grant for one forty, a culvert. At one forty and Farnham Road intersection. Um, getting the information together right now so we can get a grant for that and hopefully get that. Uh, we're doing to replace that culvert, rather sizable culvert, six feet wide. And if. Six seventy-three by fifty-five squash tube culvert that would have to, would have to do that. One forty and Farnham Road intersection.
No, town, town.
Yeah, yeah, town. Town Farm Road, yeah. Farnham.
I thought that earlier too.
Anyways, yeah. Yeah, so town farm, but it actually goes under one forty, so.
You need to respond to that.
Um. You want me to go before I deliver some more bad news?
Just wondering.
Um, yeah, so we're working on, on getting that going now before it does turn into an actual issue. What kind of turned me on to it was, we had a hole on the edge of the road last year. We put a couple of bags of concrete down into it. And some cold patch over top of it and it's held up significantly well. But we figured out why that happened and the bottom of the culvert's basically gone. And it erodes away the material underneath the culvert and then you create void. And then the material around the sides of the culvert starts to slouch and drop down and then you get a hole right on top of it, so. Anyways, that's in the works to, to be taken care of before it becomes a, a sizable issue. Um. Yeah.
And to be proactive.
Yeah. And then probably next month, uh, Pike will be coming out to start figuring out what we're gonna do to paving, just coming here.
What's the status of the CPR training that we're listening to?
Um, so I have a, I have a number of people that wanna do it. Um, the, the big question is, when does everybody wanna do it? Do you wanna do it during a, a work week? Uh, the question was possibly started at like three PM. It's, um, sorry, I gotta pull up the. Wasn't even thinking about that.
Like three or four hours each night, two months, three hours at least.
So she said four to four and a half hours. So if we, you know, we started around three PM during a weekday. That would be a reasonable time in the evening, but if, you know, everybody goes home from work and everything and then we come back at six, we're gonna be there till.
You're gonna be there like, this is a red cross?
Yeah, it's, it, it would be American Heart Association. Um.
Yeah, they're, they're about four hours.
Yeah, yeah, the.
It does take.
Katie Gino, home rescue squad, is one of the, she would be the instructor. And she said it would be four to four and a half hours, especially of, it's fresh information for a lot of people. But there is a lot of interest in it, yeah. So, um, I was kinda thinking if we could possibly do it. Start around three PM on a weekday or go to a Saturday, Saturday or Sunday.
How about Friday?
Question.
Do you have Friday work?
A Friday? Yeah, the only thing is if, if we do it on a Friday, you know, are, are we gonna close down the town office so that the people. Work at the town office that wanna intend can do that? Is that a doable thing? To shut down an hour early?
Potentially.
Yeah, good. So I'll come up with some dates and, and I'll let you know on that. Um, that's, that's basically where that stands. Otherwise, once we come up with a date and everything, that can be a done deal, so. She's more than willing to do it.
That is one really good thing to have.
Yeah.
Then you only gotta get every two years, you just gotta get recertified. And it is not as long as.
Yeah. Thanks for reminding me.
I can tell you firsthand, it works.
Hmm.
All right, is that it?
That is it. Unless anybody has any questions, comments or concerns.
Thank you guys. While you do.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do you, do you work on one forty at all or is because that's state road you don't?
We do.
Oh, okay. There's a, a slumping section on one forty as you're coming from East Polley Green. Just past that first turnout, there's that tiny little house that's between the road.
Right.
And the river. That road is starting to.
Drops down when you drive over it, you can do exactly what I was talking about with Upper Road.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so that's a class two road and I'm not sure what the status of class two paving grants are this year, but. Um. You know, we would have to, we'd have to get that shimmed. We can certainly look into what it would cost to pave even just that. That one section, but we, I think we should also take a look at the bank, the bank side there too, to see if it's. Cause that doesn't usually just happen for no reason.
And that poor house is there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, uh, community development.
Okay, um, so I just have an update really on some of the things that have transpired over the past two weeks. Um, some of which I presented on before, or shared with the board before, but, um. So I think everyone knows the chamber was, uh, very close to dissolving. Um, and I assisted with the mixer that was held at Analyst Cycles. Um, on the fifteenth, uh, which went very well. The chamber was, um, able to appoint new, a new board. And five directors, so there were nine people appointed to the chamber that night. Um, Cheryl is one of them. Um, and it was a, it was, it was really great to have that. So, um, that happened. There's been some press around it to keep the community informed and, um, I met with the new president, um, Elizabeth Ayers today. To talk a bit about the direction and the chamber board is having a meeting later this week to. To organize themselves. Um. The, I have been working on the town website. The, uh, we've selected a contractor, EcoPixel. Who is the, uh, consulting, or the developer that also, uh, created Polley Recreation last year, polleyrecreation.com. And they, we've been working very quickly to, um, build the new town website. So that's going quite well. We had a snap through last week where the website was down for a couple of days. Uh, which was related to the domain name registration at the State Department of Digital Services. Um, but state was very responsive and, uh, EcoPixel is very responsive in helping us figure out what's wrong, so. Website is back up and ready for town meeting.
And so any people be trained to use the website? Like, they're gonna be like, obviously you, is there like one or two people that are in charge of doing something with the website?
Um, we haven't quite talked about who's going to be in charge of maintaining the website, um, but there will be a training that, um, happens later on in the project. Um, or whoever staff will be responsible for updating the site. Um, apparently it can be broken off into sections so that, say like the clerk could have access to just that one area. Um, if they wanted to provide, um, updates and information on that. So I'm learning a little bit more as we go along. It is, um, we need to launch it before the end of April, so we're on track to do that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's gonna be great. Um, so I found out this morning that the MRP, the Municipal Energy Resilience. Program reports will be coming the second week of March. Those were the towns buildings assessments that were done in December. Uh, they've been delayed, uh, they are taking a little bit longer than anticipated, so.
That's why I got a key to the senior senator.
Yes, so, uh, when we have that, we'll have more information about, um, next steps. Uh, the funding for that program opens in the fall, so I wanna be ready to go. I know it's gonna be highly competitive. Um, so the town will need to make some decisions about, um, where to apply for funding, um, for which facilities. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to share with the board is that, um, I mentioned it last time, some of the housing research. Uh, that I've been doing, um, there is a lot of different programs that are opening right now. Um, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has on staff Logan, who is, um, the contact for. The state's regional housing, um, regional housing program, I guess. And the RPC has created a regional housing guide, which has over fifty pages of resources. Um, loans, grants, all sorts of things for anyone who is interested in housing development. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to get this out to the right people in the community because we've been talking about housing for quite a while. Um, and, you know, there have been some folks who have contacted me over the years that wanted to invest in housing. Or, you know, retrofit a building to create more units and that type of thing. So I wanted to make sure that I talked about it tonight, so it was in the minutes. Um, I'm also planning to go back through, um, you know, emails from the past few years about who has, um, been interested in. Housing development. But if anyone knows of anyone else who is considering, um. Adding more, creating more units out of existing property, buying a property to make more units. Um, this housing resource guide is very comprehensive and very timely. Um, so that's available now. Um, and I think that's all, that's my report for community development.
All right, anybody have questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah. That's great. Good stuff.
Thank you. All right, on to town manager's report.
Oh, can, can I back up though? You also are helping out with the Maple Fest, right? Helping with the.
Just a little bit. Um, I have been, uh, through my role on PDRC, I've been helping a little bit. Um, just to, um, connect the folks on PDRC who are taking the lead on that with, um, other, with the chamber. Previous members of the chambers and some of that, that's been going on. So, yes, that's underway.
So it was, used to be the chamber that did that, right?
It was the chamber, so that PDRC took it on this year. And, and the not knowing what was going to happen with the chamber, so PDRC offered to take it on and Nick Stark is leading that. PDRC.
So, okay, then what about the townwide yard sale?
Um, I think that remains to be seen with the new board as they get, um, themselves established. There may be some new priorities, there may be some, um, changes, given that it's entirely new slate of officers and, and directors. But, um, right now they're, I think, getting up to speed with what has, what the chambers typically done.
Financial changes.
Yeah, financials and things like that. So I would imagine it would take a, a little while, a few months to kind of. End on their feet and make a direction for where to go next.
Okay, Zayv will come to June the first.
Supposed to be in all the paperwork, bags and folders.
I'm just.
There's a lot of bags, a lot of folders to go through.
Yes, but they are aware of the, um, events that the chambers historically.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul?
So, um, you may recall from a couple meetings ago where Nick Stark presented to the board the DNH Rail Trail Council. Um, and we've, we've had one gentleman, I think he's here. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna do well with your last name, so.
You'll want harder.
Um, he's expressed interest in joining the Rail Trail Council. Um, I think Mark, you asked him to come to tonight's meeting.
Yep.
And.
He'll probably spell your last name.
Watson Barger, W A T N B A R G.
We just call you Phil.
Um, so I don't know if you wanna talk to Mr. Watson Burger about his interest or. I don't know, Mark, have you?
Well, he, he lives on it. He go, or he lives by next door to it. So he has natural affinity. And he's expressed interest. So, and, and he seems to be somebody that.
Someone is a good place.
I guess what's interesting for Pride. But, uh, I just went over that. It was kind of a preliminary, um, meeting. I'm sure Nick didn't speak to that, but, uh. But, uh, it was just basically going over the meeting, the representatives from D trams. And then kind of going over the, um, agenda, kind of went over, you know, where they're at today. You know, what they've done so far. And they talked about putting together a plan for these DNH trails. But I haven't got to that yet because of the flooding of last year. It's been held back a bit and so that's still in progress. And we're just getting together all of the representatives to come together and farm for that. So that we could basically start to, um, you know, make it official for lack of a better term. So, uh.
And they're interested in being one of the voting members on that council?
Yes.
For the, for the town of Polk.
Yeah, so that was actually, the question was also brought up was this, what's up to town and village? And, you know, it's, you know, it's tough enough to get one person to come for the town and, but to get another person, so my thought was, and it's not gonna get about this as well. Is that whether the village wanted to have me taken to a proxy for them as well? You know, and act on both sides instead of having them having to find somebody else to sit on this thing as well.
The, the way it is, every town gets one vote in there. There's village, um, they, so they sort of dealt with that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, cause Nick, and Nick, then you can talk to this, you're online here, but, uh, you know. They were talking about the fact of having potentially the concept of a village have its own vote as well as the town having its own vote, so.
Yeah, it's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Nick.
Paul had brought it up at a previous meeting and it definitely worked in further discussion. Um, so I, I did, uh, ask. Uh, so each of the regional planning commissions sort of. So I did ask, so each of the regional planning commissions sort of is, are working to put together these councils? And I asked them how they were approaching this issue with dual municipalities. And all of them had moved forward with bylaws that allowed each municipality to have a voting member. So basically, where we're at right now, excuse me, is we're hoping to get a quorum within the next month or two of five voting members from the municipalities and chambers of commerce as well, not to throw more on the plate of the Polteny Chamber. But we would hope that once we have those initial five voting members, they can ratify the bylaws, the draft bylaws as they stand, and modify them as they see fit as to whether they want to, you know, afford the village of both Polteny and the village of Grandville a voting seat as well.
Looking for the board to appoint this member?
Yeah, that would be a huge, you know, Philip came to the meeting and, you know, well, I don't have any say in it, but, you know, we do need a representative from Polteny. So it would be great to have that seat filled.
Okay, okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
We don't have to advertise or anything, it's just something who, the interest can come to us, right?
We did advertise.
We did advertise from.
We've had, we've had it out there. Where do you live on the rail trail?
Nineteen Ward Road, you know, where it crosses thirty there?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah? Oh, all right. And my wife and I walk all the way down there.
Yeah, right there.
We don't charge entrance yet.
All right, Paul, how do you feel about appointing? Eric, you?
I would make the motion to appoint Philip Watsonberger as a Polteny rep to the DNH Council.
All right, how do you guys feel? Let me hear a second.
One second.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor of appointing Philip? All in favor? Any, any no, any nays? Want to carry? There you go, you're it, guys, you're it.
You're a part of carrying the number now.
Thank you. It's good to see other people getting involved. Thank you very much. Okay, Paul?
So just to let the board know, I received the contract for the Tressel Bridge Study late this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but it's essentially gonna incorporate the terms of the, of the bid from the Fifty Year old Associates. So I anticipate signing that probably this week. In anticipation of the end of the fiscal year, I prepared a warrant to direct myself as a tax collector to start tax, delinquent tax collection procedures. Let me, as I stated, I think it's prudent to wait until the end of the fiscal year, which is, excuse me, end of, end of May is when the taxes are due. So I'm already spoken with a law firm that assisted us a couple of years ago, and they're prepared to assist us again. So I had this warrant, if anyone wants to make a motion to sign it.
And that'll start in three months, that process. Do I hear a motion to sign the warrant to start the process? Or to have the same company we did, right? And start the process of delinquent tax collecting at the end of May, start in May? Any comments or questions by the board?
You know about how many, Paul? How many?
Is that a book?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know. If you can get the most recent last one, we can.
No, just to know, you know, like, if, how many? Because I thought it was better than it had done, even though we didn't.
It's good.
It's been better. I think, I think with all the COVID relief money, there was a lot of people, a lot of people got a lot of assistance. And I think that, that helped with that less. I mean, I can grab the sheet if you want, if it's. I don't know what it's gonna look like at the end of May.
And that'll, that'll be the start of it, because that's when the taxes are done being collected.
The people do trickle in, and they pay them, not in the last month. Even if you start with forty, it may, they end up with three or four. It tramps, it tramps the whole thing down.
Yes, for some of the members of the board that haven't been part of the process before is, we engage a law firm that sends out initial collection letter to all the delinquent taxpayers and says, you gotta, you know, we're gonna proceed with a delinquent tax collection after something such period of time after you get this letter. And we pay the law firm to generate those, those letters. And if the taxpayer goes beyond that period, the collection of those taxes, the burden of the cost of the attorney shifts to the taxpayer. So.
It's a good way to do it. That's, that's, that's what we've done in the past. Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, sure. Anything else?
We did have one matter under executive session, and then Constable Craver sat in some this afternoon, asked to be added to discuss some consabulary matters under executive session.
You got it. Okay? Let's transact on the relatable select board business then. We'll do that in executive session. Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
So I attended the RPC's board meeting on February twentieth. The program highlight at that meeting was the Housing Resource Navigator project. So I have a lot of housing information. That, that was the gist of that meeting, so there wasn't a lot of new things that happened there. The TAC is meeting this Thursday. And the agenda has assessing progress and critical priorities for the Transportation Advisory Committee. So it's useful to hear this road report, Joel. And I, I guess if this select board has any specific progress or projects or priorities that I should make the Regional Planning Commission, Transportation Advisory Council aware of, I'd be happy to report on that. So maybe.
Sounds like we have a couple of road issues that are gonna be quite costly. And it's getting to the point where this has to be done. One is the Thrall Road and the other is the Upper Road.
We also have a project that Joel mentioned on Blissville Road.
On Blissville?
Yeah, we're, the town had put a retaining wall to bolster the Thrall Road, and it's failing that. We've consulted with some, a couple of different companies, or at least one, one company with some ideas. And that one in particular, I wanted to engage the services of a civil engineer so we don't have to come back in fifteen years like we are doing, like we're doing now.
Is that a big project?
I think it's, I think it's a fairly good sized project, probably not for the stroke of the upper road, but.
It's, it involves at least twenty something, moving at least twenty something waste blocks. Cool, if, if not, maybe forty, maybe, but really. I, I wasn't able to get off the side of the road this last time, but I did go down through it and I got a camera. Of course, I didn't write it down, but rough idea, there's just a lot of waste blocks. But if we could talk to also a neighboring landowner that it, that it's just past where this retaining wall ends, is a field, we could, you know. So one, one potential route is pull waste blocks out and dig half of the road, dig back halfway into the road and put some better material into there. Change out the culvert that's just north of this, this area to ensure that we get a good amount of water across the road prior to this, to, you know, make sure that that part of the road is pretty good and stable. And see what we have for base, subbase material underneath the asphalt portion of that road to assure that it's not gonna slump down and out or whatever. And we didn't, we really didn't want to just stand the blocks back up again, because I think, you know, without inspecting what's underneath the asphalt, you know, if, if it's clay, the weight of the vehicle will hover, it's gonna stand, bulging back out again, so.
Do it, do it right.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I didn't have anything extensive really to say about that, because I haven't got a price yet. And we don't even know, you know, the method of, the, you know, what the method of approach is truly gonna say.
Would find that.
Yeah, that, that would be, it would be awesome if we could, you know, just to hear what they have to say. Because, I'll be honest with you, I haven't done something of that nature. That, that's why I'm scared to just jump into the, I'm nervous to just jump into the Upper Road one and say, well, we do this, we'll fix that.
Well, maybe we'll, we'll have to.
It's gonna work, right?
We gotta do it right.
Yeah.
We gotta do it right. Okay, so Sarah, are there any road commissioners? Any, one man signed up for the meeting?
I'm, yeah, yes, there are, there's a couple. It's an interesting group of involved. So it's road commissioners, there's a town manager or two. There are, you know, planning commission members on the Transportation Advisory Council, so. Yeah, it's, it's across the board.
So maybe we should ask Joel, if he's curious about joining that group.
We discussed this today. I actually talked to Sarah today about it. I have a lot of, I have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And I really can't devote any more of my time to.
Is this a daytime or a night?
It's an evening meeting, it's once a month, and it's, you know, in person or remote. But Joel and I talked about, a lot of what is being talked about as well is planning. So, you know, transportation planning countywide. And I think that type of information probably is suited to the work that I'm doing. But some of them are, they do sometimes get into detailed conversations about road construction.
Our civil engineering study on those roads would be helpful to you, if they're giving us help. And it'd be the path to take. Yeah? You're out the books.
No, I think too, Paul.
I'm right, I, if there is a, the, what is the date?
Is that it for Rutland Regional?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let's go on to public comments and concerns. Anybody have any?
Just one question probably before. What steps did the town hall sign?
We've put a deposit with Reclaimed, and they're on a contract to do it. I, I don't know when it's gonna be done.
It'd be nice to have it done before the bicycle start coming through.
Anybody? Nick, do you have a question? Please, Linda.
Sorry. I did want to make a quick announcement related to Maple Fest. You all kind of alluded to it earlier. Yeah, it will be March twenty-third, and we've got a whole day of activities planned. And including a, sort of a, an evening event at Reclaimed with a story slam, which is like a, sort of a storytelling session for folks to share their, you know, their personal stories about sugaring. And there'll be music and food. And if you are interested or have any questions, you can reach us. We have a new email address, it's poltenymapplefest@gmail.com. Or you can follow the Polteny Downtown Revitalization Committee on Facebook. And we'll be, excuse me, we'll be posting the event information there as well.
Yeah, is the government gonna show up?
Nick, will that be in the evening, like after dark, or?
Yeah, the entirety of the day's events will be from eight AM till nine PM.
Okay, okay, because we are having meal at four thirty to six thirty at the Senior Center.
Yep, the ham dinner's on our schedule, it'll be included on the flyer, on the, the second, second version of the flyer. The first one's just the teaser.
Very good, thank you, Nick.
Certainly, thanks all.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I'm having good news in my road report. So I have some good news to add in. We, we're, we're, we're pretty much at the end of February, we still have two thirds of the sand, of the sand shed. And all of the equipment that we started winter with. Come on. It has, has done significantly well compared, comparatively to last year. Yeah, so that's, that's really, it's really good.
Potential saving.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing is, speaking of signs, at request of the Senior Center, we ordered a couple of signs of trespassing. And one is, it's in a snowbank, because the ground is like a rock on your, your end of the property over there. So it, it's in, it.
It's stuck in the snowbank.
It's stuck in the, we couldn't get it in the ground, so. Without either coming over the backhoe and destroying the ground. We said, well, this'll, this'll buy us some time until the snow melts off tomorrow. And the other one actually is in the ground, so. So one is installed, and the other one is, is sitting there looking decent, so.
My wife tried to lean on it, it's already flopped off.
The previous event that led us to the addition of signage happened, I, I was also present for the sheriff's conversation about, about signage to, to protect, you know, the property and whatnot. In addition to that, we have two entrances into the highway garage area. That we also put some, we also put a no trespassing signs up today as well to supplement, so that we, if something does happen in the future, they can't say, well, we didn't see the two signs because we came in from around back through the town garage.
Right now, around.
Now we have signage at all possible entrances.
We have a camera at the Senior Center covering the driveway that's going down that way into the back.
What you should do too is talk to the town clerk about registering that property, because if your land is posted, it has to be registered with the town for law enforcement to, to be able to enforce it. Besides the signage, besides the signage, yeah.
Okay, good to know, good to know. All right.
That's why if you see land that's posted, they have to register it every two years.
We have to do that with the Senior Center too? Well, it's just a track, we're just, it's just for walking and.
It's town property, so we can follow under another.
Everybody's gonna consider it public property, but with that posted there, I think I would just put some wording in the town here that, you know, the track area is for daytime use only. Like the Welcome Center in Ferry Haven, they have signs posted there when you drive in that from dusk to dawn, actually from seven P to seven A, you can't be there. And that was before they put the truck parking in there, so. Yeah, so the state hasn't figured that one out yet, because they want the trucker to park there. So if we have a problem with some, with somebody, we enforce it there.
Okay.
We have actually, on the signs that I put up for the, for the garage, the trespassing signs, we actually have to date those as well, you know, so I can leave that blank, that's still, yeah, okay. I heard mixed stories on that, so.
I know the way it is, Ferry Haven.
I know the way it is, um, Fairhaven's town ordinance is that the park, which includes the rec park in behind the grade school, um, there's no trespassing from dusk to, from dusk to dawn. That's another thing that, you know, the village could do because that's in the village area, is to put that in there. So there's no, the, that, that, the whole property right there, there's no trespassing from dusk to dawn.
Okay.
Which is, you just put that in, you know, your, your ordinances.
In the ordinances. All right.
Put me to school, what the town has for school property, they can, they can all go in there so that, you know, the riffraff that happens, it's dark out, you, it, it gives us, um.
A little more authority, yeah. Okay. Okay, now, yeah, I just, our absentee, we're mailing ballots still available and so I'll go back in. For Tuesday this.
Not going to see Betsy.
Yes. Yes, because my wife and I did ours already. We already voted. And would I be able to pick one up for my wife or does she need to come down and write her, sign for? She, I think she has to sign it. But to pick one, to pick up the, the blank ballot, would she need to be present? Oh, I don't know. You have to. I'll call Betsy tomorrow. Call Betsy. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. Motion to carry our signed board orders?
We wish to sign the board orders.
Um, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion Carry. We do have to go into executive session for probable civil litigation and zoning violation.
And employee thanks, but I'm going to make a motion.
An employee.
Due into one VSA, section three thirteen A one, to make a motion that's for signs of premature general public knowledge that replaces for the person involved in substantial duty in certain matters related to conference and discussion. Due into one VSA thirteen A one, motion entered to executive session, discussing the possibility of civil litigation or prosecution, which this public body is or may be a party. First, it was due into one VSA, section three thirteen A three, to make a motion entered to executive session, discussing the point of an order, one night, for evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Valuation.
Is it valuation? Valuation? Will I hear a second? All in favor? Good. We're going to executive session at seven forty-three. Thank you, everyone.